So my name is Rob. I've been using Atlassian products for about 10 years, maybe a little bit longer. But I've been on the help desk side of things. Most of my career or support desk has been part of it. I started out using different IT ticketing systems. I ended up at an organization that used Jira Service Management and Confluence and Jira Software, they called it at the time. And I just got stuck with them essentially. A lot of people ask me, why do you like Jira so much? And I say, it's the tool I have. I've begun to appreciate it just because I've used it so much. But I ended up just stuck using Jira. So I guess a question for the group is, how did you end up using Jira? Frank has a good point here. The ACP 420, the exam itself is being rebuilt and rewritten. This is good and bad. It's good because cloud systems change. Atlassian will make modifications to the system. And so we want to make sure our knowledge is up to date as we go. So if you're curious and taking the exam, we won't be able to actually sign up for it until after April 15th. After that point, we can sign up and take the new version. I do also have a free voucher for that certification I'm giving away today. So I'll have a quick link where you can share your email. And I'll randomly pick one of those folks by the end of this. I do need an email to send you the code. I don't want to post it in chat because then just anyone could use it, which would not be good. Please use the chat to interact. I really like these sessions because really smart folks. And I'll pick on Frank because his name shows up. And I think I also saw Justin in here, Susanna, some folks who've been fairly active helping me out, but helping other people out as well. So please use the chat to ask your questions, but also interact with other people. YouTube's great, but I really like it to be two directional. Chad. Also, please, if you could like and subscribe, that lets me know that this is useful. My plan is to continue doing certification trainings on this channel. Mondays will be the professional, the ACPs. And I'm trying to figure out which one to do next. So I might have a poll near the end of this or in the Discord, which I'll talk about in a moment. And I'm doing the ACA, the associate level. So the ones that are intended more for average, everyday users on Fridays. So feel free to join me Fridays to learn. Right now we're going through Confluence Essentials. Our topics this week are going to be configuring issues, both on the team and company managed side of things. And then also hopefully we'll get to talking about email requests and customer notifications. Configuration is over a third of this exam. So I have been going over last week's session, the schemes, screens and fields. Oh my, bit, because that was confusing to me. But that's also going to be a big chunk of that exam if you want to sit it. For me, it's also kind of the core of how Jira operates. You know, all these shared configurations, these schemes. Excuse me. Are very important to understand, especially as an admin, because they impact multiple things. Some resources, the Atlassian page is the QR code on the right, and I'll drop that in the chat just a moment. And then on the left, I've got a link to a Jira form if you want to submit specific questions. I clicked the wrong button, of course I did. Oh no, actually Chrome entirely crashed. Well, let me bring back my talking head while I fix that. I do have a Discord server set up where folks have been asking questions, interacting in between weeks, which has been nice. My goal there was just to give us the ability to interact between sessions. So if you have burning questions that pop up, or if you need help in between, that is a great place to go. But of course, you can always join me here on Mondays. And I think Chrome just came back. Okay, where did you go? Sorry about that, folks. Technology is wonderful until it stops working. Let's get rid of you. All right, while I get the slides fixed, I'm just going to switch over to my Jira screen and open up our official training. So this is the official Atlassian site about this. One thing I will point out in the middle, if you do want to take the exam are the exam topics. They're kind of dead center, all these percentages. And this is what I'm trying to base these sessions around, excuse me. And then you can get detailed in this PDF. So I'll be taking a look at this to tailor these. I also go into this though to figure out how do I want to learn, what I want to guide my learning. I will also talk about later, probably after team, how do we sign up for the exam? And what's it like to take an exam? I've taken a number of these types of exams where they're proctored and it's very intense. And there's some good tips and things that I can share. But for now, we're just going to start prepping for free. Again, this is the free training Atlassian gives us, which is really cool. And Chrome decided to crash again. This is a wonderful day. I'll try this again. If anyone knows someone at Google who could jump online and give me some tech support, that would be great. All right, I'm just going to drop this directly into our chat. Which also disappeared because that's also in Chrome. All right, that link that I just put in is going to take you to the training. Yes, Chad, it is one of those mornings where it's. At least the stream is staying up. Although I'm not going to jinx it. All right. I'm going to just stop trying to touch anything. Configure issue types, request types, fields, et cetera. Here we go. So to quickly reorient ourselves, we've got issue types and request types. Issue types are the kind of work. And I was going to have a counter here to count the number of times I say issue. That term is changing to work item. So you will hear me use issue quite a bit. That is just my bad habit. But please keep in mind that work item is replacing issue. This makes sense. Not everything in Jira is an issue, maybe when it started. But now many different teams use it. You might have something that isn't a issue, a problem. Because issue tends to be, hey, something broke, help me. It might just be something you're planning, it might be something else. So that term is going to change. Atlassian is going through and updating that everywhere. They clearly haven't updated it here yet. So just when you see the word issue, replace it in your mind with work item. Now in Jira Service Management, we also have request types. Request types are what are displayed to the customer. So customers will interact with the request type. Every request type in a company managed project is connected to an issue type. Now, so this is just a basic difference between Jira Software, what we used to call Jira Software and Jira Service Management, is that request type. Now in a team managed project, there isn't an issue type. I imagine on the backend and the server somewhere there is. But when I as a team managed project admin make a request type, I don't have to connect it to an issue type. It's just its own free floating thing. And there's some examples or some default issue types that pop out. So in service management, we get things like change or IT incidents. And there are also on issue types, you can have a relationship. So you can have stereotypically, there's an epic and a task or an epic and a story. The epic would be a bigger piece of work, typically a project or a larger piece of code that your team is trying to build out. And then your story or task would be the piece of information that supports that. On the service management side, I don't use these very much. I don't have that hierarchical, that parent child relationship. Because the work that I tend to get tends to just be, just fix this story, just fix this one thing. And I have another team that might work with an epic for a bigger project or a bigger piece of work. Frank, you've been using Jira quite a bit then, huh? Just seeing Frank in the chat here saying he used it as a tester and then became a partner developing add-ons and plugins. So Frank, I bet you have a very interesting perspective on how Jira has evolved, but also what it can do. I think that this phrase will be updated. And I say that mostly because business and software projects doesn't really exist. But in my mind, again, the request type is more on the Jira Service Management side. And the issue type tends to just show up on software, but it does exist on JSM as well. Now, as admins for this exam, we do need to know a lot about issue types. And that's because on the company managed side, the company managed projects, the configuration of issue types is shared across projects. So I as a company managed project admin, have to play within the structure provided by all the schemes that relate to that company managed project. Whereas if I'm on a team managed project, I can just go, almost do whatever I want. There's some exceptions, but I can go in and change the request types. We can configure, we can modify default request types. So when we spin up a project, we'll end up with a couple of request types just out of the box. All right. Now, new issue types in a company managed project require that Jira admin. And this is where I tend to run into problems because I am almost never the Jira admin. I'm the project level. Excuse me. And this is where having that team managed project is so useful. This is a team managed service project. And if I go into my project settings, I can just look for request types. Nope, this one's a company managed. Now I see this wonderful create request type because in this instance I have permissions. But if I flip over to my team managed project, you'll notice the screen's different. There is no request type and my magical zoom broke and that makes me so sad. Over on the left, there is a much different screen. I just have plus add request type. And I can make it from template or I can create it from blank. So I don't have to tell it what issue type this relates to. I don't have to tell it anything other than, you know, what is its name? And then it's created. Again, the disadvantage of this is if another team wants to use this particular request type, they have to go make it themselves. This isn't shared between them. There's no way for me to like copy and paste this easily between them. I'm actually unaware of any way to copy or paste these. Frank, I'd be curious if you don't have any tricks to copy request types and more just for my own curiosity. Now, if I go back to my company managed project, adding request types is a bit more involved. And this is because of all the additional schemes that relate to it. So on the left, I'm looking for request management issue types. And this screen confuses the heck out of me because I'm unfamiliar with it. What it's telling me is there's an issue type scheme. And again, this will be a work item scheme. Work item type scheme, WITS, W-I-T-S. I see what they did there. That tells me how these issue types are set up. And just a quick question for the group. What do you find most confusing about issue types? And again, I'm asking because when I started using this, I didn't know any about this. Krishna, we don't have an option to copy request types. Thank you for confirming. And that's what I had assumed. Again, the advantage of the team managed project is the team can do what they need to to manage it. The disadvantage is if anyone else wants to use that config, you're out of luck. They just can't. Which is where many groups run into challenges using it. Because they end up in these situations where, hey, we need a bit more flexibility. Is that actually showing? Nope, that's not showing up at all. Oh, I think I got it. Oh, that makes me happy. Justin's saying, we can't, because we can't copy between, it makes using a test bed pretty hard. No, no, Justin, stop it. Don't, don't do it. This is a bit of a running joke. Justin's mentioned testing in production. This probably won't be on the exam, but how do we safely test our changes? This is just a good topic as a system admin to be aware of. We almost never want to do something in a production in a real environment. Because if we accidentally break it, we will break someone's work or do bad things. What Justin's getting at though is in Jira, it's hard. Because we don't have a copy of the instance. And because we don't have an exact one-to-one copy, any testing we do will be a little bit different. Typically, what I do, Justin, is I have a test project in production. So at least I can pull in things like schemes. It's not, it's not a copy of my JSM project, for example. But it will have all the schemes, the workflows, everything I need. And you are giving me a great idea for a follow-up video, my friend. Thank you. I wonder if you can expand on this a bit, Frank. Issues are confusing. The handy epic functionality is unique for epics due to Greenhopper. I'm not familiar with what Greenhopper is. So this is the list of issue types that this project has available. Now, as a project admin, all I can do is look at this. I can see I have three issue types and a subtask. So when we think of issue types, an issue type can be a task level. This is my term, like task. It can have a subtask though that fits under it. And every subtask belongs to a type of issue type. I don't use these very much, I'll be honest. I tend to let my developers or my agents use them if they want, but I mainly track at the task level. Then I get to see the workflow that's applied. And workflows, again, can be shared. There's a workflow scheme. So if I open this workflow up, it lets me visually look at what is the workflow. And we haven't spoken too much about these yet in these. But these are the series of steps and stages that this particular ticket can go through. We'll cover more of these later. I'll probably dedicate at least one, if not two sessions to them. Because workflows are so important, they define how a ticket can move. The field configurations. This controls what fields are available to the issue type, but also if there's any defaults or anything that has to change about them. This screen is also really confusing to me because this just lists every configuration. And if you don't know what you're seeing, like approvers, okay, and then a list of things. What we're seeing here on the left is the name of the field configuration or the field, I'm sorry. And then the screens it shows up on. So the default naming convention is the project key, E N G S. Then the name of the configuration. And then which operation it shows up on. So we have three operations, view, edit, create. And it's telling me that for the create screen of the Enges project, this particular field AMI, or this particular screen is set up this way. This to me is a very useful part of Jira, the screens. Because this is what someone sees when they hit create or when they hit edit or when they're doing something to a ticket. One of my frustrations with Jira is just the amount of fields. There's just so many fields. Especially in bigger instances, this can make it very hard for folks to use the system. So I spend a lot of time talking to my team and saying, hey, do you need the linked issues field to show up on when you hit create? And they'll say, no. And I say, okay. And then I remove it from that screen just to make sure it doesn't clutter things up. So that's what screens do for us. And then I can go through and edit this particular field, like what screen does this field show up on? So here I can take this one field and put it on different screens. And again, to me, this is confusing because look at how many different screens there are. Just, just so many. And some of these workflow screen 31, these are just not good names. Ah, thank you, Frank. Ah, I didn't know that. This, thank you for being here, Frank, and sharing this. So it sounds like that the epic, that issue type called epic had some features that a different company that used to be called Greenhopper had developed. And then Atlassian acquired them and stuffed it into Jira. That kind of explains why epics are a little bit different. Gotcha. Frank is saying naming conventions are very helpful. I 100% agree. Jira will force you to name things like a field configuration or a screen. But you could call it whatever you want. I could have a screen called Bob. I wouldn't recommend it because if anyone else looks at it, they're just going to see Bob and wonder, what is that? So groups should sit down and especially at the admin level, decide how will we name things? What the issues with fields showing up on all my requests? Yes, so there is a default configuration that this will shock you by default will show up. So there are default screens that appear. And when someone adds a field, if it ends up on that default and that scheme is shared, it will show up everywhere. And if you don't realize that the field connects to a field configuration that can feel, connects to a screen, that connects to a screen scheme, then you're going to end up with a lot of configurations that don't make sense. And this was my struggle with Jira and it's something I still struggle with. And it's why I'm going to go back and watch the one we did last week again. Just to understand the interaction between all of those different things. But again, as a project admin, I can't change these. I have to be a Jira admin. So as a project admin, it's important that we understand that this exists. Because when I put in a ticket for my Jira admin, I want to say, in the JJ project, for the general request issue type, I need to update the field configuration. And that field configuration is called whatever this is called. That's going to make my life a lot easier, even if I can't change it myself. I can then tell that admin exactly what I need them to do so they can help me. Adding issue types. So now as an admin, if I come into issue types, I can edit issue types and this will take me to my Jira admin screen. Once it loads. I'll get some water. And this is just for the issue type scheme. It's saying what issue types are available for the JJ Service Management issue type scheme. And this is why only four show up, task, subtask, general request, issue type. I do however, have more issue types I could add. So if my team puts in a ticket saying, hey, Rob, we really need the document issue type, I would have to come to the issue type scheme and add it. Now I do also have some other options. For example, I can default an issue type. I'll leave it as none. But now if I save this, that project can now use that document issue type. And now I can clearly see it right here. And it has a workflow just called Jira. Frank, I'm sure that is the best name for a workflow. And I highly recommend that everyone just names every workflow Jira. Vary the capitalization, that's how you'll know it's different. Please don't do that, that was a joke. I almost couldn't get that out with a straight face. Under issue types though, on the left, we've got the hierarchy. And this hierarchy is what Frank was talking about. Where we've got epic, but then under epic, we've got story. And then subtask. And above that, an initiative. So this is how we could nest issue types. This is instance wide. So typically I don't change this too much. You could rename what you call your epic or have it be something different. This is where that would happen. But on the left, I've got just issue types. And this is where I could add new ones. I can see the name of the issue type, its hierarchy level, and then the schemes that it relates to. So this is another place I could go and type in, say, story. And see which projects can use it or which schemes have it available, I should say more accurately. I can then add issue types. Here we go. I did an old short about bugs having sub-bugs. So I can add a sub-bug. And I'll say it's a sub-task issue type. And now that exists, that's how to add an issue type. It's that simple. However, this does not mean that this issue type is available anywhere. It's only available where the default issue type scheme is being used. And again, for me, this is the confusing part. How do I know which issue types are available? I gotta go find this scheme thing. And it's saying it's available globally to all unconfigured projects. So this could also be something, Justin, that trips you up if you add an issue type. It just shows up everywhere. Justin, back to testing in production. Sometimes we have to test in production or make changes. That's a great tip. I'll put this back up. I do it towards the end of the day. So I'll do it when I know not a lot of people are around or I do it over the weekend. But I try to do it when one or two people who I trust and know are active are active. And I do that because I want to go ask them to say, hey, did anything break? I have someone, not me, help confirm what's going on. Where is our project JJ? So here is that, excuse me, project and the issue types that are available. If I go to edit this, I can add more issue types into it. So I could go find that sub-bug and make it available and save. And now this project also gets sub-bug. Huh, Frank, I don't want to go too deep down the rabbit hole. I went the wrong way with my. There we go. I love random, I'll call it trivia like this. How that happened, I'd love to chat sometime. I don't know if you'll be a team, but if we could get a coffee at some point, I'd love to pick your brain. So that's making a new issue type. Again, it's pretty involved. You have to make the issue type, you have to assign it to an issue type scheme and make sure that scheme is connected to your project. And then if you want fields on that issue type, you have to go to the screens and make sure that the screen scheme includes the issue type. So on the left here, I've got my screen schemes. I can see which issue type screen schemes it ties into. So I've got the screen schemes. Those then connect to particular projects and particular issue types. If anyone's good at making up songs or rhymes, I wonder if we could do that. Now, new request types, much, 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 much simpler. I'm going to go back to our project. And again, that's under project settings. And I'm just looking for request types. Create request type. Now, this is something a project admin can do. And so this is where it's important to understand who can do what, which role is responsible for what thing. The project admin can come in and make a new request type, even in a company managed project. However, they'll have to connect it to a specific issue type. So that's the difference between the company and the team managed on who can do what. We spoke about fields. These are the pieces of information just available on the ticket. I don't know how much custom fields will come up. Here is a list of different types. This will be, I am just familiar enough with these that I don't feel like I would need to sit down and memorize these. But you should be familiar with what can go into them. For example, you know, what can go into a dropdown? Or a dependent dropdown, like what do these look like? Because there might be questions on the exam about these different field types and when they might or should be used. I'm kind of blitzing through some of this. Please let me know if you want me to stop up and go back. Here we go, layouts. These terms confuse me. This bit on the left in kind of the purple, this is the description area. The bit on the right is the context area. And then there's this little tiny hidden bit called more fields. So these three areas are what project admins can touch. So if I go back to this, back to my project and I open up the request type, I'll see this screen. And I'll see, okay, I've got three different tabs at the top. The request form is what the customer will see. So if I were to enter a ticket, I would see this is the request form. And all that's been turned on, it looks like is summary, okay? And that's because the only thing in here is summary. As the project admin, I could come in and add other things. I might add a due date. I almost never add priority because everyone thinks their own ticket is super high priority. But if I save these changes and go back to my form, the change will just be live. So as a project admin, I have control over what shows up on the request form. What does the customer see? And this is something I'm constantly tweaking. I'm asking my team, what data are you missing? I'm asking customers, what is confusing? Because on these fields, if I expand them a bit, I can change what they're called to the customer. It's called the display name. So Jira calls the field due date, but maybe in this project, I want to call it, you know, requested completion date. So Jira calls the field due date, but maybe in this project, I want to call it, you know, requested completion date. Because that's more friendly to the customer, it makes more sense, it'll prompt them. And I can also add descriptions. When do you need the thing completed? I can also make it required or not, and this will force them to fill it in. And I can also make it preset. So I might say, hey, it's always going to be March 28th. I wouldn't necessarily do that for a date. I'm unaware of any way to make that dynamic, one week from today kind of thing, that would be more like an SLA. But I've seen this used for a group that had a lot of in-person tech support. And what they did is at every in-person tech support desk, they had, you know, 10 request types that only the agents could see. And when they clicked it, it would basically just ask who requested the thing. And it was for things like hardware, something you could just give someone and they could walk away. They would just type in, oh, Rob needed a new charger, hit submit, and that would fill in the type of charger. They'd add my name, but everything else would be defaulted. So it was one way to speed things up. And again, as soon as I save these changes, it's going to update my request form. So now it's requested completion date and my fun little description text. I work with a lot of groups that don't take time to do this. It's worth the five minutes to change what the request form looks like because it will help people when they put in tickets. It'll make it a little bit less confusing. So that's the external facing. The issue view is what our agents see. So this is what if I'm working on a ticket, I would stare at. So a quick question for the group. How often do you review your request types and their configuration? So exactly what I'm doing now, how frequently do you go in and take a look at these? The issue view is a lot different. And you'll see there's a lot more fields. And that's because if there's a ticket in here, and I really should have just put one in to show you. I'll pick some date. We're going to talk about what just popped up, the knowledge base thing, but not in this session, I'll come back to it. This is now my request as a customer. As an agent, if I click on the link in the top right, I'll see the issue screen or the issue view. These are all the fields that we just saw in configuration. You'll see there's a lot more than just the two that the customer filled in. And that's because this has been set up and configured. So in the description side, I've got summary. And then description, and you'll notice there's even a tab. I went through here and I added a tab to the screen scheme. So if I look at this ticket, basic info and additional information, I used a tab to split up the fields. Maybe my agents told me, hey, Rob, we don't really need to see components, it's useful, but don't put it right on the main tab, it's going to confuse us. So we can go in and as Jira admins, control what fields are available to the screen, to the view screen, and also then add tabs. I cannot do this as a project admin. And that drives me crazy because it feels like as a project admin, I should just be able to have tabs and edit them. That required me as a Jira admin to go in and adjust them. Samir, I appreciate the regular review, I try and do that as well. Scott's the exact opposite, unless there's issues. I guess Scott, how many? How many request types are there? Because in my mind, taking time to audit and double check this doesn't seem to be too big of a lift. But if there's a lot of them, plus competing priorities, I imagine it's challenging. Justin, are you talking about the usage stats or something else here? I'm just curious. What was I going to say? Sometimes to figure out if these fields are set up properly, I will go do a ticket. And I'll first put in a ticket, so I'll see what it looks like from the request view. And then I'll go solve that ticket as an agent. And that just helps me understand, hey, is this frustrating or not? And that gives me good feedback to go talk to the team to say, what should we change? Oh, tabs. I worked at a large 40,000 person company. I was looking over the shoulder of one of our customer support reps and I said, hey, how do you get tab? Like, how do you have tabs? And they had three or four tabs and one of them was just links to other resources so they could go look stuff up. And they said, oh, we just put in a ticket and the Jira admin did this for us. And that's when I became really good friends with a Jira admin. This guy Liston who showed me how to do that. Justin, I'll set up a follow-up video showing you how to build those. Oh, interesting. So if the screen's only on a single project and you're the project admins. I would love a follow-up on that Frank, just so I know. Now Frank has mentioned something here, enhanced permissions. At the project level, there is a way to give project admins a little bit extra permissions. In this case, potentially the ability to modify screens. I will take that as a follow-up. Enhanced perms. That's what Liston, that admin at my prior company gave me. Because I was just so annoying, I kept asking him for changes and he said, you know what, man? I trust you enough, don't break anything, I'll give you these enhanced permissions. I was like, oh, thank you, that was very nice of you. But I spend a lot of time on this issue view. Because for me, the agent experience is so important. For example, there is a satisfaction field. Somewhere in here. Do I think that they need to be staring at it the whole time? Probably not. So I might move this somewhere else or even just remove it. Now, once we remove it, we can go get it back on the right here, as long as it's included in the scheme. I can go find satisfaction. I can also reorder these. This seems like a small silly thing, but the order things show up in is important. And again, it depends on how your particular agents operate. So talk to them, ask them for feedback on where they think things should be. And within, you know, some bounds, you'll be able to do it. Trusted, Scott, I don't know offhand, Frank, hopefully you can save me. I've always just called it enhanced permissions. But on my trusty notepad here, my dead tree, I've got a follow-up to figure that out. So I'll have more information for you, Scott. Then we've got more just on the customer facing fields. Ooh, hide when empty. Let me go back to my setup real quick. There are fields down at the bottom that exist, but they're hidden unless they're being used. So I'll put a lot of things in here, I probably should have put satisfaction in there because the agent can't change satisfaction, just the customer can. So I don't want them to see it unless it's filled out and then we should be able to view it. I can stuff it down here at the bottom. Now the difference between this and a team managed project is just going to be that as the project admin, I can add fields. So on the right, I have a create a field thing where I can go and just put new fields in. And the other thing you'll notice, the screen isn't split. It just shows me the customer request form, the description fields and context fields, kind of all at once. I don't know if they're going to merge this UI at any point. But for me, this is another instant tell that I'm in a team managed project. If I don't have those three tabs to do things like workflow status. While we're in here touching this, the last thing I'll call out is this workflow statuses tab. This lets me change the display name of a status to someone. So again, as a project admin, I can't change this, the workflow status. I can however, have it display a different name to my customer. So instead of to do, I might have it say pending assistance. Instead of done, I might have it called completed. Instead of in progress, I might have it just be called in progress. This is a little thing that makes it a bit more customer friendly, especially if my stage names are non-intuitive or don't sound good. Not seeing where to have the additional information tab. Oh, I think I know what you're talking about, my friend. You mean? This little guy? This was added deep in my configuration. So to do that, I had to go as a Jira admin and go find my screen scheme. Was it screen scheme? Oh, where was it? This one? You put me on the spot here. I want issue types, general requests. This is good practice for me to go figure out how to do it. So this is the issue type I'm on, I'll explain what I'm doing as I go. So I know the issue type, general request. I looked up the issue type and now I can see the screen schemes that use it. I'm going to open up this screen scheme. And what I'm trying to do is figure out. Nope, that's my issue type scheme. In the screen, there we go. Susanna from the top ropes. There it is, thank you. So under screens, I looked for the screen scheme that's associated with it. Confused yet? Open that up. This is the list of all the fields available on the screens for the JJ service management screen. I renamed the default tab, basic info, and I clicked add tab to add additional information. And this is where I can then add fields that can be available on the additional information tab. This is why people hate Jira. Like if anyone from Elasian's around, the number of steps necessary to do this, I understand why they're there. This is a complex system that allows a lot of scaling. But the number of steps we go through just to add the tab or add the field is why a lot of people get quickly turned off. You're welcome, Justin, I'm going to do a follow-up YouTube video explaining this trick, just so I remember. And if you happen to find it useful, even better. So again, go find the screen, add the tab there. Hide when empty and our quiz. All right, folks, what other questions y'all have? I think I skipped this one. All right, folks, I'm going to go pull a link, hopefully very quickly. Again, my Chrome decided to all crash this morning. Because of course it did. This one. I'm going to put a link in the chat that's going to go to a Google form survey. And this is where you can enter to win a free certificate voucher. Now what, certificate voucher, excuse me, certification voucher. And basically this lets you take the exam for free. You know, we had a win here, Frank. So custom field contexts, here are my custom fields. And field configurations. Was it JJ? Is that going to work for me? All right, so this is the field configuration. So I need to make sure the field is available in here and tied to the screen that I need. Is that right, Frank? For example, if I wanted effects diversion to appear or be visible, I'd have to edit it. Nope, 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 not what I meant. Click screens. Add it to that screen and save. Ooh, where is my field? Admin helper, where is my field? Where does that live, Frank? Teach me. While Frank is digging me out of this hole. Yep, if you quickly drop your email on that link that I dropped, I'll pick a name just randomly out of there for one of these vouchers. Again, the only way I can get it to you is via email, so I'm not going to drop it in the chat. And here we go, spin of the wheel. An email starting with Arvind, ending in 1516. Congratulations. I'm going to go out on a limb and assume that this person's name is Arvind, but I'll let them know. On the issue. Well, I'll fiddle around with that in a little bit. Screen plus context plus not hidden in field configuration. That is a good formula, I'm definitely going to borrow that one, Frank. You know, Frank, I'm not going to say not to put your email in twice. I don't think, I think I did, did I set it up to block duplicates? I honestly forget. On an issue, there's a small menu, where to go? I think I know what you mean. Scott, if you're comfortable, shoot me an email there, I'll add you to the list. I have one more voucher I'll give out in about a month. Sorry about the block, Scott. Last topic I think we'll be able to get to, receiving requests by email. Right on the issue. Okay? I'm on a random issue, Susanna. Field, 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 ah, find your field. Ha ha. Look at that. Oh, I like this. Totally non-serious question, but does anyone know an informal name for the three dots menu? While I take us in completely off rails. Sorry, it's under the three dots, find your fields. And this will tell you why a field is or is not available. I call them a Twinkie. Because if you go on the bottom of a Twinkie, it's got the three holes where they put the cream in. That's a pretty cool tool. They have something similar in Confluence for permissions to figure out why someone can or cannot see a screen. So I'm glad it's here too. The more button. Tulalupay, hope I'm saying that right, apologies if I'm not. Tulalupay. I usually call the actions menu if I'm being a little bit more formal or three dots. We can get requests by email. There is a built-in email address that works with Jira. Many groups I work with though customize it. So you know, help@heen.tech instead of just whatever Elasian gives us. And I'm looking at the time and I'm going to pull us back to our beautiful sides, which of course don't exist because the system crashed. All right, next steps. There's another session next Friday, I believe that's April 4th, there will be no session the 11th. I'm going to be in team if anyone else is going to go to the yeah, Team25, which is Elasian's conference. Please look me up, I'd love to meet you. I've got a brain date set up for folks in the study session, just so we can connect. But it would be great to meet some of these folks in person. Uh, but it would be great to meet some of these folks in person. Uh, if you would want to and get a coffee or something. Especially some of you who keep saving me when I make mistakes in these trainings, uh, or just straight up don't know something. Um, so you'll see me there. There'll again, be no live training the week of the 11th. Um, please keep studying on your own. As you saw me fumbling around, um, this requires us to provide dedicated time for ourselves to improve these skills. And again, even if you're not taking this particular exam, it's still gonna make you a better admin. It's going to make you stronger in the system, better able to support your team. Excuse me. So even if you choose never to sit down and take this exam, did I say Friday? Monday. Sorry, I'm thinking of the other one. Uh, next Monday. It will be next Monday. Um, that was a test, if you believe me. Uh, thank you for passing, Justin. You get a gold star. The meatballs menu, I like that, Samir. I'll have to borrow that one. Uh, more actions, I believe is the official name. So when we're, if you're taking the exam or talking to someone, more actions is the three dots, although Twinkie, meatballs, uh, more button, et cetera, are also names you might hear. Um, review this recording. Uh, I go through these just to double check what, what did we cover? Um, but I also send out uh, a newsletter every week with a recap of what we've done. That newsletter. And everything else can be found on my website. I have a specific page just for the 420. That's this particular exam. Yeah, I'm still updating this, but my goal is this will be a single place you can go for information about the exam. Uh, I'm going to drop a link to the Discord server we have set up again for chat and help in between these sessions. Uh, and I'm adding flashcards. These are mostly for me, uh, just to help me learn these terms and remember things. Uh, but I'll be adding to those as well. Up under the tech blog, there are weekly updates on all the exams I'm working on. So you can see this is the ACA 920. This is the one that is on Fridays and I'd love for you all to join me on Fridays. Um, but I also have all of the follow ups from this one, the ACP 420. It is 920. Isn't it 920? Uh, yes, Frank, there is also a hamburger menu. There's a lot of food related menus in, in design. If you want to get the newsletter though, there's a link on the Elasian Study Community page, kind of in the middle, uh, where you can sign up and share your email. Where is it? Say nine. Now I'm going crazy. Oh, right here. Hey, hang on. Nobody move. Oh no, I wonder how many people have gone there and been like, who is this crazy guy who doesn't even know what he's doing? I swear I'm a professional. I don't know what you all are talking about. You are all trying to gaslight me. It doesn't say, no. Justin, it clearly has a four. See, there's a four. There was never a nine there. Uh, Frank, there is an ACA 920. Um, there's no ACP 920. That is a result of me copying. Okay, uh, I gotta meme that somehow. Nine is the new four. Wow. Um, if that tells you anything about how much time I don't have to do this kind of stuff, it's usually after my kids are asleep. So I'm eating into my sleep schedule to build these things. But on this page, you can sign up for the newsletter. I pop out one update once a week. Um, on both the ACP 420 and the ACE 920. I wouldn't say you were the pepac Suzanne. I would say it would be Rob. But I'll take the typo and the cheap win. Thank you. Um, next week, we're going to just keep on rolling. I forget offhand what we'll be talking about. Live. I have a number of other live sessions coming up, so we've got Loom is tomorrow. If you haven't used Loom, um, I've been using it for about three years as my video recording. I'll just drop the YouTube link. Um, it's a great way to record and share screens, especially for like bug reports, and I use it a lot for building how to documentation. Uh, and it integrates directly with Confluence and Jira. Uh, but it looks like next week, we've got our knowledge base setup and workflow configuration. Um, workflow configuration may take two sessions and I say that because I'm scared of it and a bit intimidated. Um, but this will be next Monday. And this Friday, we've got uh, ACA 920 is just rolling. After team, uh, I'll be doing the ACA 900. This is the associate level Jira software. Um, so if you use Jira software or your team does, this is a good certification in the same way. If you don't sit the exam for the 420, you'll still learn a lot. I'll be going through everything you need to know on how to use Jira software. So use a board, move tickets, manipulate things. So that's coming up after team. I do want folks to think about which exam do we want to do next? So I'll have a more official poll next week, uh, just asking folks to kind of vote on which ACP, which professional level that this group should do after the 420. Um, and again, that would probably start early May at the earliest. So if there's another professional level certification you want, let me know and I'll be happy to pick off the next one. There's I think five other flavors at this point or four other. I forget the number. Um, that said, we're just about at time. Thank you all so much for joining me. Uh, I really enjoy these sessions. Uh, Frank, Susanna, Samir, um, Tola Lupe, I'm saying that right, Justin, who else is in the chat a lot? Uh, thank you for interacting and making it not just me talking to myself. For everyone else, I'll encourage you to jump into the chat. Uh, share what you know or ask your questions. That's how we're going to improve and get better. Um, so thank you again. Please pop me an email, robert@heen dot tech. Um, or I'll see you in that next session. Otherwise, thank you again. Ooh, the 520 was confusing. Oh, Scott and you too. Thank you for being in the chat, my friend. I will have follow ups too in that blog post or as individual videos on things like building tabs, uh, enhance permissions, finding your field. Uh, and if anyone's good at memes, a meme for nine is the new four, uh, just to kind of razz me a bit would always be fun. So anyway, thank you all so much. I hope you all have a great week. Please study, please get in and use the system, ask questions and I will see you again soon.